It was very difficult read, but it was interesting. My wife was kind of reading it because she has, it's an older language. It's not an easy read.
No, it's not an easy read.
But it gives you a nice perspective on this area.
He wrote this sitting on Air Division shed.
Sorry.
It's wrapped in Ben Hur and stuff. Thank you for, you're welcome. She was enough of a heroine. They built them a nice hotel in town.
No, I don't.
The Barberworth Hotel was built in her mind. Yes. Well, it's any of that old, that old, they have better grammar. I can read.
Makes it easier to scribble.
Yep.
Did you have? Did you have a good trip?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Doesn't it make you not want to come back?
Yes, it's so green. Everyone was so nice.
I wanted to go to the Yacht Club.
The redneck yacht club? It's really pretty. On the map that came up, redneck yacht club.
I did a, I did a Smith Creek Moonshine test. Yeah, it was really, really good, to the point I'd go, I'd go do it again. Would it?
You would or you wouldn't?
I would. I most definitely would. All right. Everybody ready?
Sure.
All right. I don't see what your name. Hopefully in my ears it comes to. Well, good evening. I'll call these, this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dale?
Here.
Councilmember Eugenia?
Here.
Councilmember Teckel?
Here.
Mayor Amparano?
Here.
And the record will show that Councilmember Tucker is absent.
Thank you very much. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Roscoe, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you guys can do me a real quick favor, if we can please stand and a couple minutes of silence for all the stuff that's happened this week, both in Texas and the other states. So, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we need to pull F-12 from the agenda.
F-12. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to our public appearances. So matters not appearing on the agenda. So if you wish to address the council concerning any items within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit to each person's presentation to three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted in writing. Do we have any public appearances for matters not appearing on the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I'm here representing my nephew, who owns the drive-in movie theater and the movies. It's in regards to a matter. He was unable to make it tonight. He apologizes for that. And so I'm just going to read the letter quickly and I'll give a copy to you so you have it. I am being represented by Mark Grand this evening and I am sorry that I cannot make it in person. I am one of the owners of the Motor View Drive-In Theater and the movies Imperial. I have been going around and around trying to resolve the water bill for the Motor View Drive-In. I left over eight phone messages for the city manager to please call me. Not once has he returned my call. I have been to the city twice and have been blocked from seeing the city manager by Alexis. She also informed me that the water bill was my responsibility. End of story. As everyone knows, the Motor View was forced to shut down its doors due to digital projector conversions. It was vandalized and broken into constantly. We turned the water off at the street because of all the copper pipe was gutted and taken. We were paying our water bill every month to maintain service. The city came out and replaced the valve meter and turned the water back on. They never bothered to even look at the snack bar building. The water was shooting over 15 feet in the air. This water ran for a long time. The drive-in became submerged in over two feet of water. There was extensive water damage and now mold. That month, the water bill was huge. I have refused to pay this bill. It is now over $3,000 because of interest and penalties. I was on site at the Motor View a little over three weeks ago and somebody turned the water on again at the street and I had trough full of raw sewage because the bathroom toilets backed up and more mess. All I'm asking for is the Motor View water bill to be dismissed. You can investigate our history with the city since the 1960s and we've always paid our bills on time. You can also look into our history and see that we've never used that amount of water. I thank you for listening to my problem and concern. I look forward to resolving the problem for both of us. Mark has my contact information and will be happy to share it with you. Regards, Bob Grand Jr.
So I'll leave this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. Yes, sir?
Hello? Tracy Roscoe, El Centro. I'm coming to you today, Mayor, with councilmembers, to talk to you about the Imperial Valley Patriotic Planning Committee. Two years ago, myself and another colleague got together after performing a Flag Day ceremony and said, you know what? After retiring 300 flags and the community coming out, we need to do this again. And it was a very hot, Flag Day is June 14th. We all know how hot it is in June 14th. Great time to fire, right?
Right.
So we didn't do that again. What we did do is we formed the Imperial Valley Patriotic Planning Committee. Part of the reason why we, why we got this group together was not everybody qualifies to join the American Legion. Not everybody qualifies to join the different service groups. But we have a lot of patriotism and that shouldn't disqualify somebody for getting involved. So we became officially a nonprofit two months ago. We approved our bylaws at the last meeting and we will be accepting membership at the next meeting, which is on the third Mondays. The next meeting is on the 19th. It's open to all patriots. You can join us. It's on the 19th at 6:00 PM at Post 25, which also serves Imperial County, I'm sorry, Imperial City and El Centro. And it's at 6:00 PM, 1,800 U military type. Why do I bring this up? As Honorable Mayor mentioned before we got in, started getting into business, with everything going on, we are a country that's been in a reactive mode for quite a while. We spend a lot of money at the city, county, state level to react for events that may someday happen. Unfortunately, the likelihood has increased. One of the things that was mentioned by Ryan at the city council meeting, I'm sorry, the county meeting, was maybe we should change our methods and be more on preparation. You know? It made me think of wars. Being a veteran of war, when we go into a country and we clean it up and we want to help make it, understand democracy, we leave the youth with information. We also try to educate the adults with different, with information about democracy. But yet, here we are at home and what do we do? So I mentioned that. I urge everybody to please maybe take a more proactive approach because it could just be a matter of time. God bless those families of the lost. I don't want to take anything away from that. But yes, we do need to prepare for what if, but we also need to invest in what if. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Roscoe, I've got a question for you in regards to your patriotic committee. I know you said it's open to anybody. Do you have to be military, ex-military, prior military for this? Or you just got to be a patriot?
You just have to be a, you just have to be a patriot.
Got it.
We have business owners that have never served, no service, and they're all the way past their grandfathers, grandmothers, but they are patriots and they want to help out. God bless America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for matters not appearing on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jezza Ramirez Robles and I am Miss Imperial USA 2019. I graduated high school at Imperial High with a 4.0 GPA and with top 20 scholar honors. It was a real honor going there. I am currently enrolled at Imperial Valley College as an English major. I'm going to be transferring to UC in the fall of 2020. And that's just a little bit about me. And I am in the Student Leadership Ambassador Program at IBC and I also volunteer at the Shore Helpline Crisis Center in El Centro. I will be representing the city of Imperial at Miss California USA in January of 2020. The Miss California USA organization is a scholarship competition rather than just a pageant. They judge young women on their intelligence, confidence, and their health rather than just their beauty. They really want to inspire women to be their own girl boss and to be a role model for other young girls around California and around, for every other state. I'm sorry. They also want to continue girls getting their education after high school by giving them scholarships that range from $2,000 to about $10,000. So my hope for this competition is to represent the city I have lived in for 16 years and be a role model for the young women in my community and hopefully for the rest of the state. I would also like to inform you all that I am taking donations and sponsorships of any amount to help deduct the cost of competing. I would really, really appreciate it. There is an advertisement tax deductible for businesses if you do own a business or if you yourself would like to sponsor me. I would really appreciate it and I can give you all more information after the meeting or whenever you'd like. I'm not sure how you would be able to contact me just right now, but my email is juz22@hotmail.com. Thank you so much for listening and have a blessed night.
Thank you.
Is it J-U-R-Z you said?
J-U-R-Z 22@hotmail.com. And if you need my phone number, I have it as well, but I, my email is the quickest way to get to me. But yeah, thank you so much.
Do you have any flyers or anything that you can leave us?
No, right now, I'm really sorry I wasn't able to put it together, but there is more information on the Miss California USA website about the whole business and they explain the competition. And there's this page to sponsor a delegate, the Miss Imperial delegate, but yeah, that's about it.
Okay.
And may I ask, who's coaching you or helping you as you're getting ready for all of this?
Right now, I don't have any coaching, but I am going to be contacting one of the ladies I met at a seminar. I can't remember her name off the top of my head, but I'm kind of just coaching myself, looking at other women who have been competing in other pageants because this is not the only one that I'm really following right now. This is the one I'm competing in though. And I'm just really trying to build myself up to be confident and, you know, be able to represent Imperial.
Well, what I'm going to ask you to do is here, take my card and contact me. I'm going to put you in touch with Miss Kansas. Miss Kansas USA is a friend of mine, a very dear friend of mine, and she's going to be competing in December in the Miss USA pageant. So if nothing else, she may be able to offer you some advice on where to look for somebody that can help you. So here's my card. If you'll email me, then I can forward that over. Come and get that.
Thank you so much.
And I can get that to you.
And then we'll get, figure out a way to get, help you out somehow.
Okay.
Do you have a, do you have a social media page? I've seen, I know your mom, her mom's Patty Robles. She works at IBC. So I've seen, I've seen it on her social media, but do you have your own social media pages?
Yes, I do have my own Facebook page. That's just mine. And then they do have a Facebook page for the Miss California USA competition and they did post my bio already. And I have my, my own Instagram. It's just jezz.roblis if you'd like to.
My, my friend Annika, Annika Wood from Kansas has a lot of information for you. She's doing a lot of coaching right now with other young girls. So get ahold of me and I'll get you in touch with her.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Okay. Seeing none, moving on to item B2. For matters appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation to three minutes. Do we have any public comments for items appearing on the agenda?
Good evening. Susan Perdis, Executive Director, Imperial Chamber of Commerce. I'd just like to make a brief statement regarding subject F1. The Imperial Chamber of Commerce has truly appreciated the support of the city of Imperial in the past and we look forward to working together in the future on our future events. And with respect to this item F10, Special Events Calendar, we do have Parade of Lights and Christmas in a Small Town coming up. Those, I don't know if an ad hoc committee is going to be put in place and, and if those two events will be included for discussion in that committee, but I do would ask the council that if there is a meeting that the chamber be invited to attend just for those, that portion of the meeting, if that is at all possible. We typically send our vendor applications out in September. And so we would appreciate any information or intents on the city's behalf with respect to those events within the month of August if possible, so that we can stay on track. As it stands now, we have submitted our permits, applications to the Community Services Director hosting Parade of Lights traditionally as Friday night and Christmas in a Small Town is Saturday, December 13th and 14th, I believe are the days. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others for items appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to special presentations. See one, Subject Proclamation, the 100th Anniversary of the American Legion. All right. This is all you.
I'll turn to see.
I know. I feel like we just went through something like this, right? So, you know, and I had that conversation with you yesterday about the, you know, about the American Legion, what it is. And to me, it was, I didn't know half the stuff that you told me. So I thought it was, you know, off limits. We can't go there, but it's a lot more than just that. A hundred years for something here in the valley is, is pretty big. And, you know, we're glad to be part of it. I know we also talked that you guys, your American Legion Post 25 also helps our local scouts from the city of Imperial. So that is a great thing. I know now they're helping you guys with all the flags, trying to get all that done. So I'm really happy about this. The other one I learned about the American Legion is that they have great steaks. So I think I'm going to plan to go there on Friday. But with that, Tracy, I got, I do have a proclamation and how about I just go down there and read it for you? Unless there's anything you want to say prior.
I just want to, if I may, I've got to get plugged in for the 100th anniversary. Yes, I'm not originally from here, but I got to say, it's amazing for any organization these days to last for 100 years. Sometimes, since I've moved here, I've heard, oh, that place, if they know about it. Oh, the American Legion, isn't that that bar and place that serves dinner on Friday nights? Steaks on Friday nights? Well, yeah, it is, but it's not a bar. And I say that with great pride because if it was a bar, there's probably a bar that closed in California somewhere today. But yet, here we are 100 years later with a bar and a kitchen that's celebrating 100 years today. And that would not have taken place without doing, paying attention to four main things and that's the pillars of the American Legion. Veterans, Americanism, children and youth, and national security. Everything we do, we have a lot of programs and everything we do is focused on that. Even the Friday night dinners, believe it or not, is focused on Americanism. Why? It's a great time to bring, I've been doing it for decades. It's a great place to bring people in, an affordable dinner, reasonably priced, and in a wholesome environment that's safe. At the same time, you know, I've done a lot of traveling. I'm in Windpower, done a lot of traveling across our beautiful country. It's great to be able to pick up the phone before I go somewhere and call a post and say, hey, I'm coming in. Do you got a, what do you think of a good hotel? No offense to the chambers, but you do a great job. But it's a funny thing about veterans. We can look people in the eye or over the phone and we have this trust, this bond that is hard to break. So that bond's been going on here for 100 years. Boyce Ayton got its namesake from Lieutenant Albert Boyce Ayton, who in 1917 joined the service and was killed. The first person killed in World War I from Imperial Valley. That's how we received the namesake for that post. At that time, his body shortly after, you know, back then in 1918, it took a long time to get a body from Paris, France, back over here. So it was almost two years later, but they had a ceremony here and it was actually at the post where his body was in the back in a horse buggy and it was amazing ceremony. I could just imagine something, how that would be to have that happen today. His body was shown for three days in casket, of course, closed casket, for three days. And everybody from Imperial Valley came and paid tribute and appreciation to him. He's buried with his family over at Evergreen Cemetery. So there's a lot of history there. You can read about it in the 30, the first 30 of Imperial Valley. There's history there about Boyce Ayton, Lieutenant Boyce Ayton. Anyways, I just wanted to mention that. Of course, you know, we do have the Friday nights. We also have other events. We are open to the public. Okay? Contrary to popular belief, we are open to the public. We can serve food to the public. We have a catering license. However, once you cross over into the adult beverage area, you have to have, you have to be a guest of a member, invited guest of a member, or...
Can we just say we know you?
You, you can if I'm there. Because I got to sign you in. I'm sure most people know you guys. And then, but you got to be invited. I got to say that legally invited.
Don't just show up.
No.
And, and you have to be invited by a member in good standing. The American Legion is made up of, we have a family because we know the family serves. And that is legionnaires like myself that served during wartime. And I didn't announce this the other night, but July 30th, the other night, last night, July 30th, President Trump signed a bill that is called the Legion Act. And what it states is that, because we are chartered by Congress, so to change our bylaws, we have to go to Congress. So a bill went to Congress saying that we wanted to open up the American Legion to members because we're wartime veterans. Okay? We want to open it up because we know that there were 12 conflicts that were not determined over since 1941. Instead of seven, there were actually 12. Okay? So the Legion Act was signed by President Trump on the 30th. And what it now says to join the American Legion is you have to serve during World War I. Okay? And all the way up to 19, excuse me, December 7th, 1941. And then everything after is wartime. Okay? I say that also proudly because when I served during the Cold War, I lost a shipmate in Barcelona, Spain, where the USO was bombed. We lost a shipmate, but it was peacetime. And there were, we know that there were several thousand people that were lost during the Cold War. So anyway, that's a big thing that, what does that also do? It opens us up because that means, as I was discussing with the mayor last night, is it opens it up even more because now we have more families that qualify to join. The auxiliary and the sons of the American Legion. The auxiliary is females and the, and the sons of the American Legion are males. As you can tell, I could talk Legion almost all day, but I'll spare you. With that, it's, it's an honor to be here and represent. There would be more members here. They're actually at a meeting right now, the executive board meeting. So I'm honored to be here and get, and receive the, the placard, which I know will be presented, represented on the 24th, which is our celebration and ceremony and the public is invited. So we're open, forget about the ABC law that day. Okay? We have officially ABC'd, open one year, one time a year to the public. So we're open to the public. We'll have entertainment, food, fun, raffles, and of course, you could talk to us about joining. God bless you. Thank you.
Down there. Makes me look taller. There you go. I think that really helps. I think next time we need to add some phone books down here, you know, so I can get a little bit of height on it. But the proclamation we have here is the Boyce Ayton American Legion Centennial Day. Says, whereas the American Legion has been advocate for veterans and their families since 1919 and whereas the American Legion was founded on four pillars of care for veterans, a strong national defense, Americanism, and children and youth, and whereas the American Legion has played a leading role in initiatives and breakthroughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community, from US flag code to the GI Bill. Whereas Post 25 has fulfilled the Legion's mission since 1919 through programs such as A Troop, Family and Youth Support, Boyce State, Homeless Veterans, Scouting, Volunteering, and more. And whereas the American Legion is celebrating its centennial in 2018, 2019. Now, therefore, I, Robert Amparano, the mayor for the city of Imperial, here Dubai proclaim August 7th, 2019, as a Boyce Ayton American Legion Post 25 Centennial Day. Witness, therefore, I have set my hand and affixed the official seal of the city of Imperial on this day, August 7th, 2019. Thank you very much. All right. Well, that was a great proclamation there. And then we, like we said earlier, 100 years, it's a long ways, a long time for something to be in, be going in this, in this county. So with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Actually, you know, councilmembers, do you guys have anything to say? You want to say anything or you good?
Just appreciate the outreach that the American Legion's always held and their support for local youth programs. It goes back, personally, it goes back all the way from me to when I graduated from high school. I was accepted into a music program and I had to raise funds to go and the American Legion donated the hall. Legion donated the hall for a dinner that, and then helped set up and put on the dinner and help pay for my trip. And I, not, my father wasn't a veteran, we weren't affiliated with the American Legion, but they were very supportive of youth programs even then. And that's always meant a lot, so I appreciate that outreach you've always provided. Thank you.
Appreciate the patriotism. That's something this country needs desperately. And I appreciate that. My uncle was a Vietnam veteran, and grandfather was in World War I, actually controlling the border here, and during World War I. He was a very good sergeant that taught people very well how to tear machine guns apart and put them back together, and he was more valuable training people doing that. He said he wanted to go to Europe, but didn't have that choice. But we certainly do appreciate you and our family, so relay that back to your other members, too.
Veteran is a veteran, no matter if they served abroad or home, everybody sacrificed.
Well, he was an honorary Irishman, really wanted to fight, but they...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. My father was a World War II veteran, my stepfather is a veteran. So I grew up going to the Legion, the food side, the food side. Although I would sneak over to the shuffleboard table when it was there. And just thank you for providing the service you do for fellow veterans and for families. I grew up really loving going there.
I still go there on occasion as a guest. Thank you.
We're working on becoming, going back to being more family oriented, you know, shuffleboard table, things like that. We have attracting the youth. Our commander at our post is 30 years old. One in Braly, I think, is, we have eight posts in Imperial County. A lot of people don't know that. We have a post at Bombay Beach. I love going up there. It's crazy. That post out there, the commander's 28.
Wow.
We have three posts in Imperial County where the commanders are under 31 years old. So it's happening, but it can only happen with your help. Anyway, thank you, and God bless you. And I heard three people up there that qualify to join our family. I'll be talking to you later.
Thank you very much, sir. So moving on, consent agenda. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
The motion to approve?
Second.
And the second, all those in favor, please. Sorry.
Wrong meeting.
Okay, motion passed. Moving on to E, E1. This is a public hearing discussion action to approve this. The subject is Public Hearing Discussion Action Housing Element Update. So this is a public hearing, so I'll open this up at 7:30.
Hello. Good evening, councilmembers of the public staff. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Lisa Tyrinda. I am the planner here at the City of Imperial. I think I'm nervous, so bear with me. I don't get to come to these too often.
So should we go like this, make it more...
I think you should look away from it.
Okay, all cameras to that way.
Yes, so. The item I get to present to you tonight is the request to approve our housing element update. This item has been before you in draft format during the month of December 2018. And since then, in short, I'm going to give you the following that's transpired since we got your recommendation to send the draft to HTD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development of the State of California. We submitted the draft for the first review on January 11th, 2019. The review lasts 60 days, and on April 15th, we got the comments that needed to, or the changes that needed to be made in our first submittal. We did those, and on June 13th, 2019, we got the compliance letter from the State of California's Housing and Community Development Department informing us that our draft housing element was compliant with State of California housing laws and could now be formally adopted by the City of Imperial. So that means that the city council needs to formally adopt it, and then we submit it again, and we're in compliance and can participate in other grants relating to housing needs. Any questions?
Are there any specific components of the grant that you want to highlight as far as goals we need to be working or focusing on that we've got trouble meeting in the past?
The only thing that could stand out was, and it stands out for not only the City of Imperial, but other cities all over the State of California, is that there's a lot of needs for affordable housing. So the State of California is creating different types of bills in efforts to make, or to help cities locally meet the needs of the state in regards to affordable housing, and what amount of affordable housing is allocated to each city, and that hasn't been met. So they're trying to come up with different types of laws to help cities achieve what is known as regional housing needs goals for our district. But other than that, we've been able to meet the goals that we've previously adopted. But that's the only thing that I would say stands out.
Does that stand out at a level we need to worry about it in terms of state action in the city? I know other cities have faced some penalties from the state for not meeting it, they've had some, they've come in and slapped them pretty hard. Are we at any risk of getting any of that from anything you've seen? I know you can't guarantee, but is there anything that's...
I can't give guarantees.
Are there any red flags that have popped up, or is it looking pretty clean?
I would say that staff is working really hard to come up with options to present not only to planning commission, but in the future to city council, to make sure that we're meeting the portion of affordable, like, it's broken down in income categories. So we're formulating options to present to council and make sure that we're meeting the city's vision and the council's vision in regards to those, but also state law and the requirements that are being imposed upon all the cities in regards to affordable housing for those types of income categories, for low and very low income categories. But other than that, we have no problem meeting the moderate to above moderate. We're exceeding it.
Developers like us for those, yeah.
We're like, it's, wow, it's, you know, there's not enough words to say how interesting it is to see. But definitely, we're working on options to bring to the council.
Have we seen any developments showing up at all in the pipeline from developers who are looking at any kind of affordable housing projects?
Yes, there's at least one developer that is very aggressive in that sense, trying to look for low housing, low income housing, yes.
So although we can't really talk about projects that haven't been applied for yet, there is a lot of, a lot of requests for information in regards to that. And now that, hopefully, we adopt the update tonight, we're able to use that as a tool to incentivize and show potential developers what is needed in our city.
That was gonna be my next question. Are there incentives then that are, that we're seeing coming in from the state to help us work with developers on putting in some of those kinds of projects?
The state is in the works of formulating that, but they also have the tax credit allocation program. It is very competitive, so, but with this, it is a big, adopting this is a huge part of those developers being able to apply for it, because one of the requirements is that the city that they're looking to start this type of affordable housing development have a housing element that is in compliance. So we're there.
There's also a need of funding availability, non-competitive funding availability, which I just got from the county, so we're in talk to them. And hopefully, we can put some more money into some of the projects that are proposed, such as the senior housing apartments on Imperial Avenue.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. Good work.
And then question for Stefan. Are there contingencies we can place on developers? For example, it doesn't have to look like an entire complex for affordable housing or an entire development, but if like certain units or houses are implemented within developments so that there's not such a saturation in one place? Is that something we can look at as a city so that it's, you know, it's moderate?
That's actually a really good way to go, and I'd hope staff would come back with some of the recommendations.
Yeah, and I was talking to a developer recently who said that cities are afraid of putting in affordable housing because of that saturation, but if you do so in the form of a few units or a few houses, then it doesn't seem as daunting.
You run the risk of having someplace like the Colonia overbuilt into affordable housing, and you wind up building your own ghetto if you're not careful.
The idea behind planning, and Lisa and I, no one can really talk to this, is that you don't segregate all of your affordable housing or whatever in one particular area, and then turn that into something else, that it's better to incorporate it in all the other kinds of housing. It's like, it's like multifamily housing as well. Same principle, you don't want all of your apartments on one section of town, and then single-family homes here. It's good to mix those up a little bit, create a community, they kind of take care of each other.
Well, and you don't want to stigmatize a piece of your community, because you stigmatize the residents there. And that's something we want to avoid.
I'll also stem off of what Stefan said. There's a lot of state laws that say what we can and can't do, and it protects this type of housing, and they have to be integrated, mixed with all of their housing. And primarily because of history and what's been commented.
Examples in larger cities where they create these government housing things that are getting torn down now. You know, prime havens and slums and gang-ridden, and it's just not...
We saw those examples in DC, all those brick housing.
Oh, yeah. No question.
And I think we've had this conversation before.
We have.
About being able to move it all, not just have it in one area. So I think, I think we're moving in the right direction, no matter how we look at it.
It's a lot of work on the plan, so thank you very much for the effort and the time, and for being able to answer the questions. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work. With that, do we have any questions, any other questions from council?
Anything from the...
Nothing up here. Anything for the public?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
See now, close this public hearing at 7:39. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-45 and adopt the housing element update and submit it.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second? Please vote.
Nice work.
Good. Thank you very much for the hard work. With that, we'll move on to F, action items. I will have one change on this. We were waiting to see if that would happen. I'm gonna move F14 up to the number one spot, so...
So our SoCal Gas presentation?
I'm gonna go first.
We're gonna move you to the front.
We know you only have a two-hour drive back home.
Hello. My name's Deborah McGarry. I'm the property affairs manager of the Southern California Gas Company. Again, it's a pleasure always to be down here, and I want to thank you for adopting the balanced energy resolution. We've had a lot of success with that. We have, over 70 cities have adopted that resolution already, and we are actually approaching the State of California with information about having a balanced energy approach. I don't know if you've noticed, but on even the national level, the conversation about eliminating all natural, you know, all natural gas or any type of fossil fuel is part of the conversation. And for SoCal Gas, our belief is, is that it should be a balanced approach. It should have your solar, your wind, all of the different types of elements with regards to energy, because there's so much energy generation and requirements right now that there isn't enough energy to actually balance it out. So you still need to have the natural gas to balance out, the wind, the solar, and everything that happens during the day, plus also, not to mention, everybody wants those gas stoves that they could cook on. And actually, part of what we're dealing with now is that there's a lot of focus on eliminating any natural gas to homes or buildings. So it's not just about energy generation for electricity, but eliminating any type of new buildings, which actually just was adopted by the City of Berkeley a few weeks ago. So we are asking for the approval for the mayor's name to be added to a letter that we are going to present to the governor, and talk about customer choice, you know, you could do energy efficiency. If a customer wants to have all electric in their house, let them have it, but let it be their choice, because they're the ones that are paying for it. The State of California's not going to be paying for it, no one else is going to be paying for it, and they should be the one to do that. And so my analogy happens to be, think about the light bulb, how we've changed out all of our light bulbs to go with fluorescent, those are the only ones you could buy now. That'll eventually be the case with regards to natural gas appliances. So if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Any questions?
So all you're looking for is basically a vote to say, yes, Robert can sign, can add his name?
Absolutely.
You sure you want his name?
Heck, I'll take all of you. I'll take the letter just from the City of Imperial if you'd like to. Again, this is definitely, this is definitely, it's become a little bit of a fight for us. It's become a lot of fight for us, big fight for us. We're fighting for what we need to do as a company.
Can I send a letter along with it?
Pardon?
Can I send a letter along with it?
Your...
I don't think you would want to.
We should have to proofread that one, Jeff.
I'll be happy to have it.
I'm the kind of guy that if they did, because this state would not surprise me at all doing exactly what you're saying, it's right, because Berkeley, in my opinion, has a bunch of nut jobs in it. But in this case, I'm the guy, the guy that at the end of the day, when they take it all away, I'm gonna have a propane bottle running my stove. So, yeah, I mean, exactly, because you're right. The citizens should be speaking what they want and have that voice, instead of always having somebody at the state tell us what we can and can't do. And it's getting old.
It is.
And so I'm all for it. So I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I agree with you, Jeff. We shouldn't say you have to use this. Let them, you know what? If you want to choose, choose.
I will happily endorse the second then.
All right, so I got a motion and a second? Please vote.
You know, I had low blood pressure when I came here.
Sorry?
Now I'm all wound up again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just try to breathe as home and be...
No.
Drink soda. Don't make it all go away. All right, so moving on. We'll go now back to our F1. So Discussion Action Agreement between the City of Imperial and the City, Imperial Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Mayor, council, you've asked us to bring this back to you for action from our last meeting, and so that's what we've done, it's all yours.
I'd like to, I personally would like to table this till we have a full quorum. I think it's important, I think it's good for our staff as well as the staff for the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to see a full quorum, and then we'll discuss it.
Okay. I'll be honest, I think it's something that all five of us need to be up here to have a chance to have a voice on.
Exactly.
And to be heard on or to hear what's going on. I don't think it's something that four of us should do, and one out, he may have some strong words of support in one way or the other, and I think we need to let everybody have a voice. So I would say go ahead and table it.
Agree. Do we need to vote on this?
I would suggest you do that, just in terms of timing. You have an agreement that talks about termination without cause. You give a 30-day notice, and it's effective at the end of the, a calendar quarter that occurs after 30 days. So if you were to take an action at your next council meeting of the 14th, 30 days would take you sometime into September, you're still looking at September 30th. That would be the end if you were to take that action. If you went into the next meeting, then you would be looking at December. That's my...
I would table it to one, okay, then make your motion.
That'll be my motion.
Table it for one meeting?
One meeting.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Please vote. Okay?
Okay.
We'll table this item to the next meeting. Thank you. F2, Action, Discussion Action Agreement between the City of Imperial and Code Experts.
Alex has the next couple here.
Yes, as a major council member, with item F2, we are requesting the approval to the agreement between the City of Imperial and Code Expert in the amount of $18,800 for web services that cover our, or the city website and the utility billing payments online systems. I will stop for any question that you may have.
Is this a new company or a company we've been using for utility billing?
No, it's a company that helps us with the web services only, and it's a renewed contract.
Okay.
So nothing's really changed during...
Well, your next one...
Is the one.
Is a change.
It's a change.
Right.
In the previous, last year, the service only covered, I was covering the website, and there was no kind of fee for the utility updates. One thing is our utility billing system, and another thing is, because we developed that pretty much in-house, the payments online. So, but...
Moving on, F-3, discussion action, utility bill software upgrade.
Yes. With item F-3, mayor council members, we are asking the authorization to use the funds that we allocate in the fiscal year to upgrade our utility billing program. Right now, we have a program that is called, enhanced. However, this program has been obsolete, and we need to upgrade to the, the same company with a different name. The name is Impresa. And the migration cost is around $30,080. That amount is included in the budget. I will stand for any question that you may have.
So how long is this going to last for us?
Couple of weeks.
No.
Next meeting?
You mean the life of the program?
The life of the program, yeah.
Well, it's kind of hard to say, but the existing one is around 15.
Okay.
We've had the existing one since 2005.
So it's not like we're going to be doing this every, you know, three, four years or something like that?
There may be plugins and things and updates to it through the years, but we're going from an obsolete system to a much newer system that should be upgradable at least.
Yes, as a reference, this is the upgrade between one technology to another under the same umbrella. However, we are paying a annual subscription maintenance fee that we'll bring to the table afterwards on it.
Now, does this have room for expansion if we need to?
Oh, yeah. Definitely. The quote is based on concurrent license. I mean, we can install the software all around across the city. However, only 15 connections can be at the same time. But if you need more, we just can pay for them and for those licenses. It'll be okay.
It's been about 15 years ago. It's been about 15 years ago. I remember when we did it before.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Got a motion?
A second.
Second? Please vote.
Excellent.
Good. Motion passed. Moving on, F-4, discussion action, lease agreement between the city of Imperial and Dell Financial Services for replacement of Dell Power Edge servers.
Yes. Item number four is the requesting authorization to use the money and approve the service agreement between the city of Imperial and Dell Financial Services for the replacement of Power Edge servers. This is an item or line that we include in the IT fiscal year budget. That is three years' contract. Each year is an amount of $24,718.33. We made some changes in reference to the initial information that we submitted in the budget, but we still in the same, under the same number. And I will have any question?
I don't remember this. So I'll move to approve.
Just as a reference on this one as well, it's, although we're getting the hardware from Dell, we're going to do the implementation completely in-house. So we're not hiring no one else to put that server.
That saves us a concern. How much was the savings to do it in-house rather than?
Well, they was, they were trying to charge us just like a 10 grand just for a few configuration, a small configuration. So it was, I'll guess around 15,000. 50,000.
It's the, frankly, council, that's the benefit for having somebody in-house that's able to do this.
Yeah.
So I'll move to approve. Got a motion?
Second? Please vote. Motion passed. All right. F-5, discussion action, declare short tail switches as surplus and authorized disposal.
Yes. Item number five, F-5 is just to, as for to declare the two short tail switches that we have as a surplus and authorized disposal. Last, last month, we have completed our short tail system upgrade. We were looking for options to sell those switches, but they are, because they are obsolete, we don't have a room to put it, so we pretty much want to dispose them.
Now, we don't have to pay disposal fees for this, do we? Or is it part of our IVRMA?
No. The county of Imperial is still using that system. I asked them if they wanted, so I don't have any answers yet, but probably they can take it. Take them or?
If they want it, we just give it to them. It's not really, I don't think there's any value to it. And if it's something they can use for a year or two and then dispose themselves, then let them have it.
The idea is to just have hardware in the computer room or the storage that is not longer in use.
And these are just switches? There's no hard, no, no information, anything like that?
Oh, no, nothing there.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion? Group?
I'll second.
And a second? Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work. Because I couldn't see myself programming all that.
Oh, no.
Moving on, F-6, discussion action, design services for the 810 Boulevard bicycle path from P Street to Dogwood Road.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the city released a RFP for the design services for the 810 Boulevard bicycle path from P Street to Dogwood Road. We received four proposals, one from LC Engineering, the second one from Dynamic Consulting Engineers, there one from Alvin Group, the fourth one from COA. We review each of the proposals based on their experience, qualifications, availability, and overall cost. And based on that, staff's recommending the projects to be awarded to Dynamic Consulting Engineers. The fiscal impact is $59,800. And just for clarification purposes, it is, it's coming out of LTA Measure D, not C MAC funds. The C MAC funds will be utilized for the construction. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
The section from Dogwood down to IVC, that's county, right?
That is county.
Have you heard anything about the county? Are they going to look at that at all?
No, I haven't been in communications with them.
Just curious.
Tell them we'll trade them some servers.
Well, we'll make it nice enough to get through Imperial, but once they hit the county portion, they're on their own, I guess. It's, okay. I'm glad to see the.
And we'll have a conversation.
I'm glad to see we're redoing that, though. It'll be nice to get that back in, back in service.
Like the fact that we're going to be putting some trees in there. They look nice. Cool.
And so.
I've had a lot of students at IVC asking about that path and if it were going to get done or fixed, so they'll be really grateful to use it.
Yes, yes. For.
So we're looking at 59.
Yeah.
Eight.
And DCE is one of the local ones.
Plus another 40 or 50 and change orders, but you know, that's, that's to be expected.
No, it should already be drawn up.
I'm going to watch and see if it passes up that 68, 640, we're going to have, I'm going to, because they're underbidding and building it on change.
We'll work with them.
We've worked with all of them before. But that hasn't ever helped us.
Yeah. The sign we.
No, this is just a design. I know, I know. It's the construction that it starts to get a little crazy.
We're just giving you a hard time.
I will say, I'm happy to see them doing something with it, adding the trees and doing stuff that makes it nice. Because that section from Dogwood to IVC, that's pretty bleak. I saw, I saw a gentleman the other day, and I was going to pull over and give him a ride, felt bad for it was hot. Somebody did pull over and pick him up. I was going to, I was going to do it, but it's pretty bleak there. He was just walking along that section.
Makes me make our part nice.
Yeah. It will be a nice addition to our city.
So now that we're going to put trees from P Street all the way to Dogwood, how are we going to water those?
We can use a canal water. I mean, we have water lines everywhere. That's, that's not a big issue.
Okay. So we're not going to run sprinklers all the way to Dogwood, right?
It's probably going to be a, yeah, a big, big line. Most is going to be a desert landscape, so it's not going to drop, it's going to be drought tolerant, so we're not going to be using that much water.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Great. Move to approve this contract?
Look forward to this. Got a motion and a second? Please vote. Starting to come along. Great. Motion passed. Moving on, F-7, discussion action, Cambria Park.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the city of Imperial awarded a contract to RFP Schultz July 18, 2018, through bid number 2018-07. The construction of this project was successfully completed on April 2019. The park has a lot of amenities, landscape areas, picnic areas, a child play area with playground equipment, shade, a bathroom, and a walking trail. The fiscal impact for, for this came out of parking back fees in the amount of $327,564. No change orders. Staff recommends acceptance of the project and authorize the filing of the notice of completion.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you recall how much that shade cost for that?
I have an item, but I don't recall. I can forward that to you.
What's the lifespan on that shade?
I'll have to look at it. Usually it's a.
Two weeks.
Two weeks here. Give or take a day.
Maybe through August.
The contract will give us a one-year warranty, but I think it's got to be at least five years for the shade, yes, for the top.
So if something happens within that five years, it's going to get replaced?
But we'll allocate that information, just want to make sure that.
Okay. Appreciate that.
That's a really nice shade.
Real quick, while we're, while we're on that subject of shades, real quick, Othon, could we have staff look into what it would cost us for a steel structure that you have high enough to where it's going to provide shade, but the heat's not going to be radiating off the shade? So in other words, you're going to have more height on it, so you're not, it's not going to be as hot. But my curiosity to this is, I've seen in other states in Southwest where they use very similar to stuff we see around here, but they're putting it over playground equipment. That lifespan could be 30, 40 years, and it could be painted. It's not, this material, fabric, falls apart in five years, and then we have no shade.
It's like that sunbeam lake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I would like to see what costs.
A metal top.
Yeah, a metal type. I mean, if we can get with, with maybe Castile Construction or Douglas Construction, see what that type of a shade would, and they would have something, an idea, and I'm not talking about a big steel structure, but something that would last us out 20 years instead of something that's just going to, and the other thing I still keep saying we should have done on this park is we should have planted plenty of trees that go coincide with the shades. Not only aesthetically, it's nice, but it's providing a ton load of shade. And that needs to be done on our parks. We need to put more, and similar to the trees that we have now that's in the pocket parks like where I'm at, whenever we planted those crepe myrtles, damn things looked dead when they were planted, and they still look dead. The newer trees that we've got downtown are beautiful. They're green and they stay green year-round. We need those kind of trees. And believe me, they grow big and they, and they provide tons of shade. And I'd like to see more of that, because that beautifies things. When we have just drab things, and it's just, I mean, we have enough alkali, I mean, in this town, we need, we need shade, we need shades, we need trees. But if we can get that cost.
I will.
Because if we can, if we can figure the difference between the two and see what it's costing us every five years to put up these same shades over and over and over again.
Yeah. Still want the shade at the waterpark.
Yeah. And I'm going to echo that one. I know we have 150 trees that we got on that grant, right? Do we know where they're going to be going?
My proposal was to have each community park give an allotment of the trees. The desire of the group that's planting them would rather mass plant them in areas, but I've been told that I can move forward with identifying where those are going to go. We're looking at October, November for the planting period.
So maybe is that an idea that we can put them around the splash pad here, around the sides and kind of do that?
What, what size, though, are they?
I believe they're.
Are they seedlings?
No, no, they're 15, I believe they're 15-gallon.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, all I can see is if there's something small, they're tore up before they ever grow. And they're not crepe myrtles, are they?
No, no.
Salt cedars.
Yeah. You know what?
They'll grow.
They'll grow.
You know, man, we lived in them in sea lane. It's all right.
But, um, yeah.
We, I'm sorry, Mayor, we actually do have a list of trees that we can select, and I can provide that to the city manager and provide to all of you that you can look over if you'd like.
That would be great.
If there's a way, Ember, that we can look at, and I know I keep pushing this, but that tree that we have, and I don't know what it's called, Desert Aspen or Arizona, whatever it is. That tree is so dang hardy, and I don't know where it came from, because it was not around when we were kids.
Yes.
Just in the last few years, it's come up. But I mean, I planted one in my front yard that was actually dead in El Centro. It came out on the bottom of the trunk, and I planted it in my front yard, and it's 30 feet high now, and that's eight years. So, and it stays green year-round, and that's the important part. You plant some trees, they shed, and then they're just a, just a trunk. You don't see anything on them. At least those trees are beautiful. They just stay green and vibrant year-round.
And I agree with that. The other thing, I know we had talked about here recently, still staying on this park theme, about the shade at the splash pad, about going around it, not on top of it, so we can provide shade around. And I know we kind of had an estimate, it was roughly this, but maybe we can get that number to see what it really would cost, and we can try to start budgeting.
That's a good idea.
You're going to look at the metal shade structures, so that's a great place for one.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea around the outside, they could cool off. But my thing is, and maybe I'm going to get slammed for saying this, but kids need to get hardy, you know? We were kids, we ran across the asphalt, you know, we played outside in the heat and nothing happened to us. You get thirsty, you grab your neighbor's hose, you take a drink. Whoever, you're laughing, but it's the truth, and you know who did it.
I want to see you walk barefoot across the street now.
I'll do, you know what? I need tomorrow for that, because I still got it in me. But I mean, but seriously, that's not a bad idea going around the outside.
Go around the outside, have it in the middle, because we know the shade, our sun doesn't go like this. It'll come at an angle and you'll have shade all, all day.
Throughout the day, at different places.
So I think that's a good idea. Maybe we can explore that.
Good conversation.
Thank you, guys.
I also, I'd ask you a question in, in January, and I don't think you need to answer to it at the time, but it was about using agricultural or ag, using, using ag irrigation for parks within city limits. And I was told that it was illegal to use ag irrigation within city limits.
maybe I'm going to get slammed for saying this, but kids need to get hardy, you know? We were kids, we ran across the asphalt, you know, we played outside in the heat, and nothing happened to us. You get thirsty, you grab your neighbor's hose, you take a drink. Whoever, you're laughing, but it's the truth, and you know who did it.
I want to see you walk barefoot across the street now.
I'll do, you know what, I need tomorrow for that, because I still got it in me, but I mean, but seriously, that's not a bad idea going around the outside.
Go around the outside, have it in the middle, because we know the shade, our sun doesn't go like this. It'll come at an angle, and you'll have shade all day.
Throughout the day, at different places.
I think that's a good idea, maybe we can explore that.
Good conversation.
Thank you, guys.
I also, I'd ask you a question in January, and I don't think you need to answer to it at the time, but it was about using agricultural, or ag, using ag irrigation for parks within city limits, and I was told that it was illegal to use ag irrigation within city limits, and when we were talking about the trees earlier, and about the sprinkler system running all the way down Ayton, would it be cheaper to use ag irrigation, and is that possible?
That would be something I would have to check with.
Yes, it is possible, but we have to take a look at where the source is going to be.
Like tiling, as opposed to sprinklers or something like that?
See, I think the comment came back on that we can't tile line the parks, or the retention base.
But was that for sure, is what my question is?
That was, that came through executive.
Public services, public services made that statement.
Yeah, and so we know, because they were saying it was the, because we have a retention base, and you can leach that into the outside, and so on, I, yeah.
That's an interesting thought, because I know that if you're going on Forster Road to Westmoreland, and you go through Thompson's Cross, and you come up, and you have all those eucalyptus trees, and that's Mr. Abadi's field, they've actually ran a ditch along the side, but it's actually, I believe, the drainage from that field, so when it drains, it automatically feeds those trees, so whoever has that field, that might be able to do the exact same thing, and then they're feeding onto that, and it's not costing anything extra. And that may cut our cost down, we can look into that, I mean, from sprinklers, because that's actually even better, to leach it.
But I would agree with leaching those, if we can.
I wish we could, yeah, that would be really nice.
Do it at night.
Once it's underground, they won't know it's there, right?
Think they'd go to the sun at night. So with this, any other questions on Cambria Park?
I'll move to approve and to accept the park is completed and authorized final filing.
Okay, got a motion? In a second, please vote. Thank you very much, motion pass. Moving on, F eight, discussion action for City Sewer, City Hall Sewer Line.
Isaiah, council members, we're seeking a continuance for the emergency repairs to the sewer lines at City Hall.
I'll stand up for any questions if you have them.
Can we do, since this doesn't have to come back every month, but we do a, basically a blanket extension of this for, say, six months, and then if they want to bring it back for a change down the road, they can, otherwise we're saying we accept it as an emergency for the next six months.
As I recall, the public contract code requires that you take action to continue the emergency at each of your regular meetings.
Wow.
And I think the reason for that is, if you recall, when you, once you declared the emergency, then you didn't do the public bidding.
Right.
That would normally be associated with a job like that. And so I suspect that's the reason why the legislature requires you to monitor in that way.
Okay, you're also giving your city manager a lot of flexibility and authority to do some things, and it's best that this comes back to you each meeting so that there's a report, so you don't come back six months later and go...
Wait it number.
You did what? Okay, then...
Isaiah, you're going to come back again.
I'll move to approve the continuation of the emergency.
Real quick, are we still okay with 40,000?
Yeah, we're just waiting on a performance bond from them to send back those for some requirements that they need.
So we don't need to up it?
No.
Okay, great.
We need to up it, we're just going to mush the entire City Hall.
Not bad.
Up the tents.
Not a bad idea, second that.
All right, got a motion and a second.
With the 40,000 and demolishing.
So I got a motion to continue the emergency. Was that your second, Jeff?
Yes.
All right, so I got a motion and a second, please vote. You guys be starting? All right, great job. Moving on, F nine, discussion action, Airport Land Use Commission.
Deborah's going to have to take this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, just a little bit of a background on the Airport Land Use Commission. The commission is established in each county to regulate land use around airports. One of the roles of the Airport Land Use Commission is to formulate a comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan that will provide for the orderly growth of each public airport and the area around it. The Airport Land Use Commission reviews local governments' land use decisions for conformity to that plan. The commission consists of seven members with at least one representative from the city that is contiguous or adjacent to the qualifying airport. The Airport Land Use meetings are held on the third Wednesday of the month, which is, happens to be the night of a regular council meeting for you. The city council had previously appointed a council member to the commission several years ago, and however, because of the conflicts with the meetings, it was determined to go ahead and appoint someone from the planning commission to the Airport Land Use Commission. At the time, Mr. Charles Lucas, our planning commissioner, was appointed, and Mr. Lucas has recently resigned and relocated to the state of Arizona. He had approached Mr., a fellow planning commissioner, Christopher Hoff, about being his replacement on this board. Mr. Hoff has expressed an interest in being appointed and is present tonight if he had any questions from him, and I did place in front of you earlier before the meeting, a letter from Mr. Hoff. So at this time, the Airport Land Use Commission is requesting a city appointment be made as soon as possible, and their next scheduled meeting is August 21st. Because of a lack of a quorum, they had to cancel their July meeting.
Christopher.
Yes, sir.
You sure you want to do this?
I don't like airplanes, but I can do it.
Considering where you work, that's a bit of a contradiction there, but okay.
Yes, so, I stated in my letter, I have talked to the Navy already, I did get invited through JAG and everything else, and since I'm doing this as a private citizen, I'll be able to sit on the board. If, however, there arises a conflict with the base or something, I would simply recuse myself from the decision-making process.
Fair enough.
And you just will only see me once a month at these meetings instead of twice a month. So it's already fitting into my time schedule, you know, a lot of time.
That works. Okay. I will move to approve and nominate Christopher Hoff as the County Airport Land Use Commissioner for the city of Imperial.
I'll second that, a big second.
Got a motion and a second.
Good job.
You'll be grateful for it, thank you for doing that.
My pleasure to serve.
Glad you know airplanes.
We need to vote.
We need to vote, yes.
There you go.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Moving on, F ten, discussion action, special event calendar for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
And, Mr. Mayor and Council, Ember is going to present this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, during the budget planning process, it was determined to lower costs of overtime resulting from the seven Imperial Market Days events and two chamber events. The plan was for the city to scale back the seven events to four events, to focus on creating four city signature events. In the packet, a calendar was provided identifying valley-wide events. At the time of the submission of the agenda item, I did not have the dates for events planned by the chamber, but that following Friday, I did receive the application from the chamber. So we would be looking at, their proposal is to provide the light parade on the 13th and the Christmas in a small town on the 14th, so that would be added to the calendar to review. With the budget that we have for overtime, it's $25,000. Our special events, each market days in the past averaged about $6,500 per event. The chamber events does come from that budget as well, and it was reported that it was $19,000 for those two events. So in the planning of looking at the events that we will have as special events in the city, we would have to keep that in mind with the overtime.
And let's, there may be a correction here, is it 19, or is it 16,000?
I thought it was 16.
16.
16,000 for both events.
I apologize. Yes, thank you.
So council, based on your direction during the budget, and during that discussion that we'd had, you'll recall, we came to, I think, an understanding from the staff's side that we were going with four market day-type events, a possibly October-November event, which we thought could be like a Dia de los Muertos kind of a thing, then our thought was a Christmas time-type of event, the recommendations that were made during that meeting was we roll in the light parade, the Christmas parade, that the chamber had been doing, that the city take that over and roll that into an event, so you still have the parade, but maybe we do some other things with that as well. Then there'd be two other events, some kind of a cook-off thing, barbecue, cook-off, the... What have we done in the year?
We were looking at, we were looking at adding the May 2nd event, which was the Blues, Brews, and Barbecue.
Okay, so the Blues, Brews, Barbecue, which would take what we've done in the past, kind of combine it with some other things, and then a fourth event would be, was that a springtime event, or was that a, the summer event was the Brews, Blues, and Barbecue in May? And then you were looking at, what, a mid-winter kind of an event, or spring? You've got a lot more here than summer events. What was your recommendation?
For the council to review, my recommendation, based on the events that are taking place in the city, I love the idea of the Dia de los Muertos, however, October is a very busy time in the city of Imperial, you have home football games going on, fall festivals going on, it just didn't work out with that. So you have the Halloween carnival, the PTO on the 26th, the TL Wagner on the 2nd of November, the cattle call, chili cook-off on the 2nd, so it just didn't really work out for that timeframe. But I can, I just want to provide you all this information, just in case you really want to go there. I did talk to the, some of the vendors as well, they felt that the November event was a strong event to attend, everyone's excited, you have the snowbirds coming out, so we could, you know, have that Harvest Festival and maybe bring in a stronger band, more, you know, more celebration with that event. It would be, the November event, I visualize as a kind of the market days, where you have the vendors selling, you know, celebrating, it's right before Thanksgiving, all the families are coming down, so that's, it's that hometown feeling for the city of Imperial. So that would be one of my recommendations, would be the Harvest Festival on November 16th. Depending on what we want to do for the month, you know, if we want to have an event in December, we could have an ice skating rink, which is pretty economical to bring in and has good coverage, and have a parade, have a Christmas theme to it, that's something that would be very special in the city as well. But I provided some additional options, so there'd be plenty for you to choose from. We are entering a new decade, January isn't really that popular for street events, but January 4th is the Saturday after New Year's, we could make it a fun event for the city celebrating 2020. And then also, we typically have the tri-tip cook-off in February, if we wanted to stick with that. And then one new item was to do a Spring Fest festival, the first day of spring is March 19th, so we could have a Color Fest on March 21st. One thing that I did hear from some vendors was, in March, it is right after the fair, right after the airshow, everyone's pretty burnt out. It doesn't seem like it is in November, there's a lot going on in November, but everyone's ready to come out, they're ready, but March, I think they're just kind of fizzling down, so, and then the summer Blues, Brews, and Barbecue, that provides us that option to offer the tri-tip cook-off there if we wanted to. Yeah, yeah, okay, stick with February for the tri-tip cook-off, okay, that makes it easy.
A lot of people, I'm not, this is me, and there's a lot of other people, it's the same way, you can stand in front of a barbecue and keep warm with a coat on. You can have May and sweat like a dog, and, I mean, it's a double-edged sword, but I think being a little cooler is better than being hot.
And now you never know what the weather's going to bring, so.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to move that Blues, Brews, and Barbecue into February? Or is there a reason why that's in May?
Absolutely, you really could, we can do whatever the council wants us to do. Our desire here, I know we've talked about an ad hoc committee, we're running out of time, you know, the truth is, is we put together a committee now to start figuring this out. You know how those things kind of, it's a lot of planning and very little doing, and we're really about the point of what we've got to do. There's sponsorships that we're going to need to go after, there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done, bands that need to be hired, and so we're really kind of bringing this to the council now, saying, give us direction on what you like, and so these are some recommendations, you can take any of these and combine them together, you can do something completely different. I know that one of the big things, and I'm kind of sad to see that maybe not as feasible as that Dia de los Muertos, you know, that could be a great thing. The problem is, is she's right, there's a lot of stuff going on in October and early November even, that just kind of makes it, we're trying to be good neighbors as well.
Yeah, we can't compete.
That's the deal.
I love the idea, but we cannot compete with TL Wagner, I couldn't care less about Brawley and the Chili Cook-off, that's a daytime event, that's not a problem. The TL Wagner's our town, and that's not fair to compete, go ahead and date with them.
So would we be able to, I don't know what the dates are for Dia de los Muertos?
That's the weekend, it's November 6th, it would be right then. It's November 1st and 2nd.
So we can't push it back a little bit, to the 16th?
You know what, people would celebrate on the border, what, if you wanted to incorporate some of the elements of the Dia de los Muertos celebration into Harvest, you could get away with that, you could have some of that in there, but I don't know that you need to, I think Harvest can carry itself off.
That's true.
So, you know...
My suggestion is, pick some dates first, and then let's build some ceremonies, some things around those dates, giving them enough of a space between each one, so that you don't have three of them on top of each other, and then nothing going on. I mean, if we are talking November 16th, there's a lot that we can build into that and go to work, if you want to incorporate some of the Dia de los Muertos, let Ember kind of go back with her staff and come up with some ideas.
For me, it would be November 16th, December 14th. And then flow into the February, and...
Finish with March.
Well, no, because you have the fair.
See, the fair, I get their point, but you know what, if we could swing something in April, before it's flipped over, I know we kind of skipped April in the planning here, and you do have spring break to work around, but if there's a way to work around, maybe, you know, the weekend after Easter, or something along, or the weekend before Easter, something along those lines, do an April one, and that gives us our four, and we don't push all the way into May.
If we do April, if we can push that to where it's closer into the evening, when it's cooler, when it's darker, because...
Yeah, I mean, again, we do the evening starts.
April's going to be warm, you're going to be 90, 95, high, easy.
You know, it's weird down here, though, I've had Easter Aprils, where we were wearing, where we put on jackets and blankets, it's just so hard to predict, but you're right, if it is going to be warm, you can go in the evening and be fine.
But October, what are we, I'm just, I'm not trying, yeah, I'm going to be a good neighbor, but at the same token, what do we have in October that's pressing, that's out there?
So, October, just looking at staffing-wise, you know, what's going to hit mainly the PD on, there are some home, that's when the home football games start up.
Next Fridays.
Okay, but that's Friday.
Fridays, so depending on how overtime will roll over on that, being, you know, conscious of overtime, the first two weeks are fine, the second, the 19th, there is a Beer Fest that's being held at the Imperial Valley Desert Museum, that I was never aware of, and then the Boys and Girls Club is having an event as well on the 19th.
That's out there.
The 19th was a problem in your schedule, though.
Yes, I'll be in Oklahoma that weekend for homecoming, and then the 26th...
That's why, it's college football, you've got to remember that.
Could you do it via phone? Could you run that via phone?
Well, Priscilla, Priscilla is here.
Can you see Priscilla's race back there going, "Don't get there," look at her. Priscilla's like, "No, not me."
Yeah, she's amazing, so...
So we can do October?
See, because that was one of the things I'd raised earlier, I know you want to be there for all of them.
Yeah.
But I really like the Dia de los Muertos, I think if we pulled it, if we tried to do October 19th on that, and did that, I also have a problem, if we're trying to, if we're going down the less, packing them in too close together becomes a problem, November, December bothers me. If we did October, did December, did February, did April, then you've kind of got a rhythm to it that fits. And I know you hate missing, I know, I get it.
Let's see how long we're dating we're talking.
16, 19, October 19.
So if the council wants that, let's go back quickly, make sure that there's no conflicts on the 19th, even though you're going to be out of town.
The only events in the valley that I'm aware of is Imperial Valley Desert Museum Beer Fest, and the Boys and Girls, and Boys and Girls Club auction.
Those are not that big of an event.
So we'll build a Dia de los Muertos, kind of a fall celebration, whatever it's going to be.
I really think that would be a big hit, I think that would do well.
It would be like our tri-tip, or to keep getting married.
I really do think it'll be huge, and then next year, maybe we can get it, you know, if we can fit it in, you know, closer to, we won't have a problem.
We'll have to dress up like that for the OSU game.
But I think it'll be, I think that would be a huge success, and it really does respect the culture of our community.
Absolutely.
You know, 80% of our families would relate to this, so I think that's the way to go.
So we've got October 19th, we've got December 14th, is that, is that...
December 14th, there's, yeah, because El Centro parade's on the 7th.
Correct.
So then they'll have the 14th.
I have to ask the council, do you want the city to take over that parade then, and build that into the December 14th thing?
Yes.
I would like to see it, because we have an application in for the parade from the chamber right now, we need to know what to tell the chamber.
I would like to see the parade run on Saturday evening, as part of what we're doing with that event in downtown, for me, and we could run the parade the same route we ran it last year, we shift the market to go up Berione, and use some, and, you know, work with that area there, and I would like to see that done that way. I think that, that works.
I like the idea of the 14th, I think it's just getting a little closer to Christmas, people are more into the spirit at that time, and nobody really pushes that, everybody's trying to push everything on the first week of December.
Yeah.
I like that. I like that.
So we'll come up with kind of a program for you to kind of take a look at here in the next council meeting or two. So you have something that says, you know, here's some of the things that we're talking about. These are things that are doable, feasible, that work within the budget that we have. And then it gives you an opportunity to kind of take a look at what we're thinking.
And then for me, if you roll the Blues Brews and Barbecue into February event, but the tri-tip cook-off and all of that, that could be a blast there. And then, then go to April. And I like your Color Fest idea. And you could pull that, you know, that spring fest. You could even put together an afternoon 1K or 3K with, you know, with color and all that on there. So people can do the white t-shirts and go get splattered with color and then have all the events. And if we can find some black lights to put up around town.
Oh, that would be cool.
That as you're walking around with your color splattered gear, you're gonna be glowing. You know, things like that.
We're gonna bring in the marijuana growers to kind of help out. It'll be very psychedelic.
I think they'll be all in favor. I guarantee you, they've got posters and stuff they could put up that would work.
I'll join this meeting real quick.
My brother still has it.
I did say that in jest.
He's still got it.
I'm glad you brought it up, Don, since you have.
You can fire me.
So that's where I'm at. I don't know. Corinne, what do you think? You can quiet down there.
I know. I like the idea of the Dia de los Muertos. I don't know if the county still, sorry. A few years ago, I went to a Harvest Festival at the Midwinter Fair, and I don't know if they still do that. This was in November a few years ago. I don't know if it's happened. Do you guys remember this?
Well, where they had the spooky deal.
Right. It was like a tiny little condensed fair. I don't know if they.
Oh, that was a one-time.
The haunted house.
Yeah, that was a one-time that they brought in.
I don't think they did it last year.
Okay, I didn't know if that was something that would conflict.
They brought in a carnival for like two days or something like that.
Yeah.
So I like the idea of the Dia de los Muertos. I think it does coincide with our community well. And the hot barbecue in February sounds good. So I like everything you guys talked about.
Like, successful for us, something like that.
Very successful over the years.
Would the color run be during the day or night?
We have to sit down and talk about that. We did offer a color run in the evening at one time. It was, it didn't, wasn't received very well.
No.
We can review.
You could do it in an afternoon if it's not too hot. You know, we could look at the weather that time of year and decide to go in the shifted to morning or afternoon.
Yeah, I like the idea of the 5K with the festival.
Yeah, the little, you know, 5K, 1K.
During the day.
5K, 1K. I worked a 1K.
I'm a 1K.
I'll fight for 1K.
I'll do a half K.
But, yeah, I think that would be all right.
So I guess my question would be, is, I know that earlier we had, they had said that there was applications put in for the 13th and 14th for the chamber, for the Parade of Lights and Christmas in a small town. Now, we're not gonna combine those?
No.
Not what I'm hearing?
No.
That's not what I mean. That's not what I said. I was looking at market.
Okay. So it's gonna be two totally different events?
Yeah, we would take the, we would have the Parade of Lights with the Market Days on Saturday, the 14th.
Our Market Days.
On our Market Days.
Our Market Days with the skating rink.
Right, that whole thing.
Also, one of the movies that were at the, I think we had songs about how they, people didn't ever really go to the other side. Would that be something we could maybe re-approach if it were moved to the other side or more towards the middle? Because I like the idea of there being maybe like an outdoor animated movie, a kids' area, like near the food where kids can just hang out. I think it's a good concept. It just wasn't placed well.
We're gonna take a look at some of those, that what worked well, what didn't, can it modify? One of the challenges we have with the movie is when you've got a live band, we need to get the movie thing far enough away to where it's not.
I was gonna throw you out an idea. Have you looked at, have you ever seen a silent disco?
Yes.
You could actually maybe look at using something like that to support the movie. And you could put the movie in closer to the center where people are gonna be, and the kids coming in, check out the headsets, and that's out there watching the movie.
Yeah, they headed at the fair this year.
Yeah, that or also kids, just like the animation, if there's a kids' area and they're running around, they're not really that concerned with the sound.
They're playing the movies in the background. Yeah.
But it's a nice.
Let us look at it. We'll bring some ideas back to you on what we think might work. Cost is another one.
Correct.
Sure. Yeah, no, we get it.
And so with that.
But I think they're great ideas. Let's go back and put some things together.
Are we looking at new bands this year?
I haven't started looking at bands until I knew what kind of bands I'd be looking at. I've already been contacted by all of the bands we've had in the past. So, yeah.
One of the things we discussed is, we know that there are some musical groups that generate a lot of excitement and are very popular. And there are others that are more theme-oriented, and they're nice and everything, but it doesn't generate maybe the party atmosphere that you might be looking at.
There's certain ones that people stand around and just want to listen to the band.
Yeah. And so we'll, we're gonna come up with some suggestions there as well. I think as we go through and do kind of a reset with this, we're trying to figure out, how do we create, because you're from, you went from seven to four, how do we ensure that these four are really well-attended, that there's a great energy and vibe there, that people are excited to be there and they're having a good time. And one of the ideas was, you know, if you're, if you've got this great country western band, and we've had some down there last year, some terrific ones.
Yes.
Maybe you go out and find some of these clubs, these dance clubs.
Line dance groups.
Line dance groups, and pay them some money to come out and teach line dancing and get line dancing going on.
That would be awesome.
And that's the kind of real party atmosphere we're talking about during this, to kind of get more participation from the crowd, other than just kind of standing around.
But yet still have family stuff for the kids to do.
Absolutely, yeah. Some of the best dancing I've seen, quite frankly, is with some of the little kids out there.
It ain't for me.
It seems like the bands that promotes dancing generates the most crowds.
They do. You know, you have certain bands that people want to set up their chairs and watch.
They can play all kinds of music, not just one kind.
All right. So do you need anything besides just the verbal direction?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, F-11. Discussion Action, Sun Valley Behavioral Medical Center, 5K and One Mile Casa Race?
Priscilla.
Oh, Priscilla. You get nervous, too?
My first time I did. This time, this time I'm excited.
She's a veteran now.
All right.
Not quite. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Sun Valley Behavioral Medical Center is requesting to host its annual 5K and One Mile Casa Race, which has been held for the past nine years. This event is scheduled to take place within city limits on Saturday, October 12, 2019. In addition, they are requesting the use of the city's cautionary barricades and cones to provide awareness to vehicles and a safe running route for participants. Barricades will need to be set up by city staff at 6:00 a.m. and picked up after the event at 11:00 a.m. Staff request approval for Sun Valley Behavioral Medical Center to host its annual 5K and One Mile Race within city limits on Saturday, October 12, 2019, along with the use of the city's barricades and cones. For your convenience, attached to your packets is a map of the running route along with where the barricades will be placed, which is along the, which is the intersection of Claypool and North Imperial Avenue and on Marshall Avenue in front of Stokel Water, a little past Sherwin-Williams. So I believe it's highlighted in the packet.
So are we shutting these roads down?
Uh, yes. Well, no. Wait. Yeah, for the duration of the race.
Okay, in that timeframe?
So it'd be from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00.
Since we have two major delivery vendors there, if they've been contacted about this to make sure that they can adjust their delivery schedules and not have a problem, not getting their trucks through?
I don't even think they run on Saturdays.
That's why I'm asking. I want to make sure.
Yes, our contact person from Sun Valley Behavioral Medical Center contacted both of those, as well as the fairgrounds, since they will be running through the fairgrounds.
Yeah, I love that. The route's great, actually. It works out really well.
And the businesses around there have been contacted, correct?
Yes.
Confirmed.
Even the new ones?
We'll ensure that that all does happen prior to taking place. And the good things you're looking at, areas that you may have some delivery traffic in that, but for the most part, it's a less impactful and shorter road closing than we see in other areas.
That's really cool.
That's very cool.
But we'll make sure that notifications are out and that we're dealing with that, with the applicant.
No, I can't run that.
So we gotta make two separate motions on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll make the motion to approve Sun Valley Behavioral Medical Centers to host their 5K One Mile Race on October 12, 2019.
Got a motion?
No, second.
Second, please vote. Okay, motion pass.
I move to approve the closure of streets affecting Imperial Avenue, Claypool Drive, and Marshall Avenue.
I'll second.
Motion second, please vote.
We pulled F-12.
It was me.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't do it right. Okay, motion pass. Moving on, F-13. Discussion Action, Professional Service Agreement for the Administration of Community Facilities Districts, CFTs, and Last Key Lighting Maintenance Districts.
Laura has this one.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Couple and Gruber Public Finance retained June 2016 as a community facilities district, lighting and management, special tax consultant and program administrators. They started with us with the one-year contract in 2016. We did come before you in 2017 for our First Amendment, which was a two-year contract. Now we're before you for a Second Amendment for an additional two years. So this would take us through fiscal year 2021.
Couple and Gruber have done a fantastic job with this. There's seen no need to change that over with one of them. So that's what we're doing here.
I'll move to approve the Second Amendment to the contract.
Second Amendment. I had a motion, a second, please vote. Hey, helicopters.
And there.
All right, motion pass. All right, so with that, we'll move on to reports. Start on my right side, Ms. Eugenia.
Nothing official to report. I did just come back from a three-week road trip to see my husband's grandparents in Arkansas. It was 4,000 miles with a four-year-old and a chocolate lab. So it was very interesting.
Which was most difficult, the chocolate lab or the four-year-old?
The four-year-old, for sure. But I bring it up because it was a really great trip. Everyone was, it was really great that we met along the way. It did make me, these recent shootings really made me think about how fortunate we were in that trip. On the last stretch of our trip, we were supposed to stay in El Paso. And I convinced my husband to go to Roswell because I thought seeing aliens might be more interesting than El Paso. We missed that shooting by one day, and we went through several Walmarts in the South. So, sorry. We feel very grateful to be here today, and very thankful for the safety of my family. And my heart's go out to those families and all the victims of those shootings.
Thank you. Glad you're here. Hope you guys made it back. Glad you guys had a good time. But go to this side. Mr. Dale?
Nothing to report on my side, other than, I have to say, I know, it sounds like a broken record, but I drive around our community and I see what our staff does and how things are looking. I love how the park's coming out over on Sunset. Little sprigs of grass is coming out everywhere.
Nice.
Police Department represents the city very well. Saw somebody getting pulled over the other day, and it was blatant. And it was, I was like, right on. I was doing this to the officers and lit him up. It's like slowed down.
It happened to be me.
Jeff is honking as he's driving by.
Oh, I was like, right on. This is good. But I just have to say that I'm really proud of our community. Fire department chief, you do an awesome job. We've always been moving in the right direction, and I think that it's a, that's a reflection of the staff, you guys. So just giving you kudos. I really appreciate you all.
Mr. Peckto?
Two things. First, I'm gonna say that I appreciated City Manager and Alexis taking time to meet with the kids from the FFA when they came around with Mr. Scare to talk about what they were trying to do with their golf tournament. Appreciate you making them feel welcome and supporting them. Stefan has agreed to sponsor a hole, which I thought was awesome. I have as well, because I wasn't given a choice. But, and I'm assuming Stefan's still gonna play? Yes?
I am willing to play. I stink, but I'll play.
So do I. And I'm gonna play. And Jeff, you gonna step up as a third?
I'll drive the golf cart.
I'm gonna play.
All right.
But look, there's, there's, there's two to a cart. And Corinne, you said you'd drive?
I'll drive.
I'll drive.
I will gladly consume wine.
Okay, then you'll be my designated driver. And.
Can we get one of the city carts?
Sure, again.
It's a four-seater.
We're gonna do it. We're gonna, we're gonna do it.
So, okay, we'll have some of us there to help you out. So, and that'll be fun. I'm looking forward to that. It's always fun to step up and support the kids. But thank you for making them feel welcome and supported. That wasn't the way they were greeted by every entity that they visited. There was at least one business that was not maybe as warm as you were. So I appreciated that you guys were there and opened the door to them.
I will tell you that they are terrific, terrific kids. That's, they're incredibly impressive. I think about what I was like at that age.
I'm hopeless.
Our community is in good hands.
Yes.
They're all trashed, right?
You know, and then El Paso was tragic, and Dayton was tragic. But I was really affected strongly by Gilroy. First of all, having attended the Gilroy Garden Festival more than, you know, a few times. And love it. But also, it made me reflect on how lucky we were last year that we didn't suffer a tragedy from a driver who was out of control. And the need to definitely make sure we are ready this year for everything that comes up, as ready as we can be. And, you know, just the terror that raises, that someone could choose to go that direction at a public event that should be as fun and loving as a festival. And so, you know, that's what affected me. And I appreciate, although how tragic that was for you to miss that by a day, and I'm glad you missed it. But, you know, I definitely want to make sure that our law enforcement knows, we really appreciate you and your support and your professionalism. And we know that the Navy stepped up and helped us with the Andy Ruiz Festival, the parade with the barricades and things like that. We know that we're gonna be able to count on the support again, and I appreciate those entities that are working with our city to make it safer when we do these events. Because these need to be things that our kids celebrate the rest of their lives, not some traumatic incident they look back on. So I am grateful for all of those who are working in those fields. Otherwise, like Jeff said, city looks great, you know. Things look good, and people are responding, and I appreciate that. And can't wait for the weather to break so we can get out and enjoy the city a little bit more. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, guys. Just to, once again, echo a couple of those things. The parks, once again, they're looking great. I do happen to live by Sunset, so I drive by it quite a bit. The low grass sprouts, it looks nice, you know. I know residents are always asking, you know, can we do something about the parks? And we're trying. We're trying to do the best we can. But, you know, we also ask the help from the residents. When we have those barricades, please don't go through them. And I know a couple of days after they watered it, somebody decided to run through it and ride their bikes through it. It doesn't help our parks. But, you know, good thing we have great staff to do the best that they can with what we have. So we really appreciate that. The other thing I did get to do is I, last week, I got to visit one of our camps at your office. I got to go to a fairy camp. Last year was superheroes. This year was fairies. Unfortunately, they didn't have wings to fit me. I didn't get a wand.
You have your own. You could have brought them.
And I didn't have my heels, and I didn't have my dress. But, you know, it was neat to see these little girls running around, learning about fairy tales and all that great stuff. Just the smiles that it puts on those little kids' faces is great. I also got to talk to the parents, the parents at the camp. And, you know, why are you here? You know, my question was, where are you from and why are you here? Oh, we heard that this is a great place, and a great camp, and this, and that. So, you know, good job. Hats off to staff for that, because, you know, the kids really enjoy it, enjoyed it. I did get to issue their certificates of completion of fairy training. So, or something like that, right? So that was, that was really, really cool. Now I can say I've done the superhero side and, you know, the other side. So it was great to see. But, you know, like Jeff, Daryl, and Corinne say, you drive around the city, you look at things. As the other day, I was driving out on 15th Street, you see the striping going on by our crews, painting the lines, getting things cleaned up. I know school's coming and all that, all the hard work that's going into making our city look great. Go to other cities, you don't see that happening. But we see it in our city, where everybody works together and you get things done. But, you know, and I was taken back, because I was coming back from Brawley, and I looked, our population sign only says 8,000.
Need to update that?
I think we need to update it. Add another 11,000. I think we need to update it, add another 11,000 to it, 11,500.
Is that a state sign, and since it's on the city road now, can we just tear it down?
Uh, we can take a.
Can you take a?
Yes.
I already removed it.
I've got white out.
I took it down.
We'll, we'll find out, uh, we'll find out, I thought we talked about that before.
We can just put, put a number in front of it.
Yeah.
Put a two.
Yeah, get that done and.
We gotta do it in a race.
Brawley will get nervous.
It's gonna keep growing, so, so yeah, you know, just, I, I looked at that and went, you know, we're not that, we're, we're bigger now, we're, we're a bigger town.
Two in front of the eight, we'll get there eventually.
That's our two.
Yeah, forecast, forecast. And what that leads is to, you know, I know we had asked about welcome signs, what can we do about our welcome signs coming into the city? I, I was coming out of a fire from Sealy, and I'm driving through Sealy, and I see their sign that says, Welcome to Sealy.
Yeah, they have a nice one.
If Sealy can do it, we can do it. It doesn't have to be great and expensive, I know we have machines that we can cut our stuff out of steel.
I agree.
And it, all we need is four, all we need is four.
There's some really cool signs in Texas, and Corinne, you probably saw that driving through there, they use that, they cut those deals out, and it's the sign, welcome sign coming in.
Have you seen the welcome sign in Yuma? It's a paddle wheel made out of.
Yes.
Out of, uh, uh, that, that, that mat they use for concrete filled with rocks, and it's a paddle boat.
Yeah.
So it's very.
You know what'd be cool is go to Vegas and get the guy that goes like this.
You know, but really, just to throw out there, the bike racks that we have.
Yeah.
Look really awesome, and so doing something on a bigger version of that with our logo on it carved in steel like that.
Welcome to City of Imperial.
Really cool.
I think, you know, one on that end, one on this end, some on those ends, and I think would be great. And I know it's gonna go along with everything else we're trying to do. But with that, you know, going back, the, the, we do have great staff, and I think that's why we, we are where we are. You know, our police department, I drive by, I see them all the time, they're always working, doing something, so. Fire Department, I know we get to sit down and talk, uh, different stuff, but, uh, it, it's great. But, uh, thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys put into the city, and this is what we have, is we have a great place.
Yep.
With that, I'm gonna move on, and Mr. Marita?
I have nothing, Mr. Marita.
Alright, then we'll start on this side, Amber? Alright, Alex? No? Laura? Oton? Debbie?
Just briefly, um, I made a trip to Tennessee, it's my daughter, her family relocated there.
Nice.
And today I was approached by someone asking me about my retiring and moving to Tennessee. Apparently, there may be some word out there in some newsletter, though I am leaving, but no, I am staying.
It did not come from me.
Nope.
Tennessee is great. I, 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 just like Corinne, I traveled, I did, I did 2,500 miles, 14 days with a 16, 13, and a seven-year-old.
You win.
And five states later.
And it was hell for them.
I know.
No, it was rough for me, trust me. It was, but it was great, uh, but I'll go back to this side, uh, Chief, I'm sorry, Captain Luna.
Captain Luna.
I did the same thing.
Yeah. There's a difference, you have hair.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I only have a couple of things, um, recruitment, uh, we just finished backgrounds on one of our police officer candidates, so, um, we should be hiring this individual within the next couple of weeks, he's a lateral police officer, uh, but we will be bringing him to council, uh, to have him introduced. So, uh, then we have another, um, individual who's also in backgrounds, but, uh, that's gonna take a little while longer. Uh, we currently have, uh, five police explorers in the Police Explorer, Annual Police Explorer Academy in San Diego. That was going on from the 5th through the 10th, so we have some staff out there right now, explorer advisors with the explorers. And, uh, they will be finished on the 10th. Also today, uh, we had one member of the public come in, and actually, a five-year-old by the name of Amber Gonzalez, who was the first person to collect all of our.
Awesome.
Trade card, so she has received her gift, but she left it all to me. Alexis took some pictures, and I'll give it to her, I'll be back on social media, on our city's social media tomorrow morning.
That's awesome.
And that's all I.
You know, it's not fair, because the one I have to collect is on night. Yeah.
You got a man, no year old.
That was a conversation we had, is my daughter goes, well, how did I get them? I said, tell your mom to go, well, how? Just have her drive 65 down the, she'll find one of them.
The night shift starts at what, 6? 6:00 PM, so.
Yeah, I'll get them, I'll catch them. Um, Captain Luna, and when I was reading your guys' memo, you said you have four reserve police officers and candidates and backgrounds, is still that correct?
That's correct, we have four candidates right now, two of which, um, need to get their recertification, they're in the academy to get their recertification. So usually, if you attend the academy, um, you have three years to get appointed. If you do not get appointed, then you have to go through re-qualification, that's what they're in right now, uh, but they are currently in backgrounds. So it's, uh, basically in its impet stage right now, so, um, as it progresses, we'll update the council.
And the other two are?
And the other, the other two are brand new for our academy.
Oh, good, just glad to hear that, thank you. Well, look forward to, to, to any officers.
They'll also be brought before council, be sworn in, and then.
Great, thank you. Chief?
Nothing yet.
Isaiah?
Nice, good.
Nice, that's Jackie's. Mr. Chatwin?
Uh, nothing to add beyond the memo, I will be out of town, uh, out of the area beginning on the 13th, uh, next week, and should be back by the 20th, in my absence, Oton will be the acting city manager, uh, but I will be available via cell phone or any other way you need to get ahold of me.
Try to get everything signed. Good, alright, moving on, uh, Damon? Nothing? Chris?
I feel a little schizophrenic down here as public affairs officer.
Different hat.
Yeah, I'm switch hats. It's gonna be really quiet on the base for the rest of August, we don't have a lot of squadrons in here, but there will be an uptick in flying in September and October. We do expect all the hangars to be full, so there'll be a lot more flying in. We will have some, uh, some new overseas guests, well, they're not new, they haven't been here in a while, and I can discuss that with you offline if you want to, but, uh, it's gonna be a full, all the barns will be full, skies will be full, and, uh, most of the flying will still be during, during the day. The helicopters will fly at night, they fly over into the desert, so it shouldn't disturb anybody too much.
Great to hear that, thank you. Thank you, sir. Chamber? Thank you.
I'd like Alexis to talk about the cameras.
Oh, yeah, can you let us know about our new, uh, system?
So come on camera.
Of course. So thanks to IT and Auburn Research, I'm sorry, I'm just a plug for Alex here. We have upgraded our camera system, we see one here overhead that displays the dais very well. We also have a second camera here that is pointed at the speaker's podium. Uh, we will actually be trading this for the camera on the wall, which is not yet active, that will be a direct point here at the speaker's podium. And then we will be, uh, also hardwiring in the screens that you see, that will display your votes as well. Uh, we navigate between all of these on the laptop, and then we also monitor the live stream of social media. Right now, we're, um, experiencing great sound, uh, which is great, yes, uh, that's another part of the hardwire into the system here on the wall and all the ports. Uh, but we are experiencing a little bit of a delay with our camera timing, so once we get that kink worked out, we should be good to go.
Love it, glad to see the upgrade, very glad.
I know we had talked, is there any way to get a timer?
Alex, no.
A timer.
Timer for public comments to be displayed on the screens is a request, we can definitely look into that and bring back some.
So we can, we can see a timer either on that side, and there, there can be a timer behind us up here somewhere where we can see what the.
The problem is that always will be a delay, no matter what, because although, I mean, for example, right now we have a delay, but not necessarily means that it's our equipment, it can be something with, uh, Facebook servers, for example. So, um, for us, it's kinda easy just to put an Apple TV there with the Facebook app and start, I mean, transmitting the comments, et cetera, but it's gonna be a delay.
But like on the.
To clarify, Mr. Mayor, are we talking about when, when members of the public come up to address the public comment?
Only this is a physical timer, we don't need it online.
No, not online, just a timer. Somebody can hit public comments and it'll, digital timer and say, okay.
Doesn't the mayor reserve the right to set the limit?
Yeah, correct, no, correct.
I think instead of looking for me to wave my hand and try to figure out what fingers I'm holding up, is the mayor with like a digital timer right in front of him.
Put you a little aid timer, you can set it right there and wind it up and.
We'll get something figured out and bring back some recommendations.
Cool, thank you. You're on. Well, good, alright, well, with that, I'll adjourn this meeting till.
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now.